September 10th, City Council call for a motion. Please stand with pleasure, Mr. Mayor.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Councilman Adams will not be here tonight. He had a medical procedure today and he was told to stay home. No, that's the story he gave us. All right, the first item on the agenda will be approval of the minutes from the August 2017.
Take a motion to approve the minutes from the August 27, 2018 meeting.
Second? It has been moved in second to approve the minutes with the clerk please call roll.
Loa?
Yes, Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Stein.
Kayla?
Yes.
Next item will be statement of bill paid in amount of $1,552,679.07.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to pay the statement of bills in total in $1,526,790.07.
Second? Then moved in second to approve the statement of the bills with the clerk please call roll.
Loa?
Yes, Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Kayla? Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda will be request for comments from the public. If you please walk to the podium, state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Jeff Boddy, 105 South 103rd Street. In 1994, my appraisal of my home was $81,600. In 2018, it was $189,900, an increase of 133 percent. My city tax in 1997 was $346.46. In 2017, it was $994.87, an increase of 187 percent. The mill levy in 1997 was 36.92 mil. Currently, it's 46.15 mils. My city tax is outpacing my appraisal. I attempted to contact five to six members of the council by using the email link on the city website. One came back undeterable. Two did not respond. Two did respond, and I got the feeling that one member that responded was not happy regarding our exchange of emails. The last member I had in exchange of emails with also called me, and that member did not seem to be annoyed. How am I supposed to let my views be known if the members of the council don't respond or one is unable to reach them? There are local numbers to call. I have called my state officials and talked to their person on the phone. The current policy of the mayor, I was told, is for elected officials not to respond to a citizen during a council meeting. I feel that's not a proper way to treat a willing citizen. I'm here to get their thoughts and opinions. I have voted for these members, and I should be able to get an answer from them in a public forum. They are responsible to me, not the mayor. The businesses in the Witten area have been told are on pilot program, payment due taxes. They get a tax break, whereas the homeowners and citizens of Everson don't. My assessment rate's 11.5, of which I pay in full. Their rate's a full 25 percent, if I understand my appraisal classification form. How much is their tax break? I saw in the editorial hot shot that it said there would be no tax increase because the mill levy's going to remain the same. Does that mean my tax bill of $994.87 will not increase even though my appraisal went up? And if it does, is that not an increase? Instead of the no tax increase because the mill levy remained the same, are you considered a lie by omission? Example is, my real estate tax segment dated November 5, 2015. My 2015 city mill levy was 47.67, and the next year was the same, 46.367 mil. However, my tax rate went up $51.72. That's a tax increase even though the mill levy stayed the same. I've been told by city staff and elected officials that it had nothing to do with appraisal, and that's true. But however, you're pretty sure what those appraisals are going to do when you're going through the budget process. And I figured my budget, my city tax with the current mill levy and my appraisal, I'm going to get an increase on my taxes again. I encourage everyone in this room who live in the city to go home and compare your taxes, how they gone up, how they've outpaced your appraisal. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a phone number, or would you like to give it out where I can call you?
Yes.
Thanks. Are there any others? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is consider authorizing the city manager entering the contract with Little Joe's Asphalt Inc. for the 2018 street maintenance project. Ms. Snyder will handle this item.
Good evening, State Council. Before you turn around, just a memo asking you to award the 2018 street maintenance project. We solicited bids, and the opening was last week. We had five contractors that submitted bids. Little Joe's Asphalt paving was the low bidder, for a amount of $123,510. The 2018 street maintenance project includes pulverizing in place and overlying 100th Street north of Kansas Avenue. Also, we have five full-deck asphalt repairs on the project. We had also solicited an alternate bid for removal of one of our furniture roads down here, Pacific Street, on the southeast corner of Ford and the Rubber Trax, in anticipation of a Whiteville project coming within the next couple of years. However, the bid was a little bit higher than we anticipated, and we have not received confirmation that we'll be getting reimbursed in the county at this time, so we chose not to go forward with the removal of the Pacific Street. So at this time, we're asking the city council to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with Little Joe's paving, for a amount of $123,510.
Where are the five full-deck repairs?
Two of them are 102nd Street and three are on Richland. Based upon, also based upon the bids, we've got some really good unit pricing, and I believe we're going to underrun on a few of our items. We're going to have some extra money in this contract, so there are some other large, more large pavement repairs that I'm hoping to do. Primarily, there's a larger one on 98th Street, probably south of River View. We have some writing and pushing going on there, so I'm hoping to add along to that contract.
Are they a local company?
I'm not even sure.
A monter or baser? Whoever you say, they're references.
They've worked the first before.
I think they've done some work before. I can't recall what exactly they did, but I believe they've done some smaller projects. I don't know if they've done it per se, or if they've done them full-deck repairs and those types of things.
But they have done this exact same type of work for City Wharton Park the last week, and we've been very happy with their work. It's my understanding that they'll be subcontracting out the pulverizing in place or old nagging to another contractor who worked there, too, if they'll be doing the old white road.
So we're going to approve 123-510?
Correct.
Because it says below the engineer's estimate was 1.6625.
Correct. Yes.
That's just the engineer's estimate for what they're probably going to do.
We use that kind of as a...
As a guide, on some higher level.
We're not bound to that number, but we kind of use that as a measuring stick here. I will say that generally speaking, and we do this with each year's budget, so we look at the special sales tax fund, and we look at how much we allocate out of there and out of the special highway fund. And of course, both of those, those revenue sources, we budget for them, but they're not always exact, and so we try to watch and make sure we don't spend anything that comes in. Those funds are self-sufficient, so we can't spend more than we can put there. But roughly speaking, we allocated about $150,000 for this type of road repair in 2018.
How did 100th Street become the target of $123,000 expenditure? There's five houses?
There's like 14.
14 houses? On 100th north of Kansas Avenue?
Yeah, maybe 12.
How many of them are occupied?
I believe all of them are occupied. I don't think any of them are not, but I haven't seen any different.
But how did this become, how did this?
Right.
I mean, we have through streets that are in as bad a shape as that street, and where did it fall on that?
Pacer.
Pacer rating.
In front of you, this was done about 2013 by the H.C. Roads.
Yeah, but this is a 16, well.
For the map, it's reflective of like the 2013. So if you see 100th Street, I'm not certain this is 100th Street right up here. Actually, we have some significant full-deck repairs and pavement failures on 100th Street, and therefore, you know, after evaluating the roads that we drive, we were going to have to save tens of thousands of dollars just into blade patch on 100th Street. We have, it would cost about $35,000 just to do full-deck repairs on a couple of large sections of road. And so, we, you know, thought of a couple of different approaches that we could take: blade patching, full-deck repairs, milling and overlaying, or pulverizing in place. And we really feel that the bigger bang for our buck on 100th Street, since we do have pavement failures at this time, is to go ahead and pulverize in place, but before the gel overlay, that'll give you another 15 to 20 years out of that road, as opposed to saving $35,000 or $40,000 right now, just doing some full-deck repairs and just chip sealing the rest, and it'll all continue to deteriorate over the next five to 10 years. But as you can see from the pavement evaluations of the H.C. Roads here...
I guess, I don't know what the scale is.
Um, it's 1 to 10.
Oh, I see red and green.
1 to 10, the maroon colors, like this little segment here and some down here. The darker ones are ones and twos and threes. The reds are fours. The next color, five would be orange. Six would be the yellow, and then the green is red. And it's basically on a 10-point scale, 10 being excellent, 1 being failed. And so, based upon the deterioration of 100th Street, back then, when it was evaluated, it was been a four, right now, we're being considered a two due to the severe writing and distortions in the pavement. So it's by far, by far the worst street in the city back then at this time.
So if I'm looking at 94th Street over there, from River View South, it's showing green, which is the best rating that we have?
At that time, it was. Obviously, unified government overlaying that, Michael, and we did overlay, but it's in relatively great condition.
Oh, no, I agree.
I'm not certain.
So is that what they did? They just did a milling overlay?
I think that, I don't even know if they're building, I think they just did an overlay on that road. I don't know. I mean, that's what it appears like, they just came in and did some type of overlay on it.
We weren't quite as prepared.
Okay. We really didn't know they were doing it until I found out why that section of road, I mean, it was in pretty poor condition, but...
Maybe we could ask them to do some other roads.
Yeah. We'd be certainly happy if they want to just keep going south. So one of the things we try to do, I mean, because there's always this which road should be done, so the pacer is one of those mechanisms. I mean, obviously, we get verbal complaints. Now, we don't want to just be responding to, well, my road's worse than your road, because everybody's road's worse than somebody's road. But we also try to look at, what can we do to engage the road before it gets to a complete reconstruction? And in some of our roads, we know we want to improve, so we want to put curving gutter on, like Kansas Avenue. So we may bypass those and do better roads, but we also, you know, know we have a limited budget for spending here, so $100,000 or $150,000 is a lot of money, but in the pavement business, it goes not very far. So we look at that, too, and say, okay, where are some of these? As you know, we've invested money on Kansas Avenue and on, you know, Kansas 102nd. Several of the neighborhoods show red, but those of all them, you know, we've redone almost all of those, like the curving gutter and, you know, relatively inexpensive to do, just doing a milling overlay. We haven't done any where we've done it.
They like prioritized on, you know, like, well, I remember the pacer, when the guy came in and said he was glad to help pay all that out, and he gave everything, so I mean, Edwardville, you know. But were they prioritized, and have we been running by that priority? And I'm not against repairing that street by any means, but, you know, there are other streets that need some attention.
Well, part of our, we did this study, right, to try to get a standard, because we didn't have that before. And really, our first, so really, the two things, our first focus was look at our residential neighborhood streets, especially those with curving gutter, and get those to a point that we were saving, because what typically happens is the road goes, something goes to curb. Curb is expensive, I mean, you're probably $15, $20 a linear foot now. So curb is very, very expensive to replace, so we wanted to protect that. So we spent most of our focus in those areas. We then focused kind of in the downtown, or the old part of town down here, and we used this exact method, we're pulverizing in place and put asphalt back. So we're not regrading it, we're not, you know, we're not changing the hills and any of that, we're just trying to get a solid driving surface put down that's going to last for 15 or 20 years, that doesn't have any maintenance. The other issue then gets us to what I'd say are long-term, the 94th, 98th, 102nd, the Swarts and things like that, those are going to be higher, much, much higher dollar projects, and I think one of the things we have, we're kind of back around to that cycle, we're going to redo the pacer and update it.
We're not evaluating all the streets as well, and updating them as well.
And so then the question is, I mean, you have to put a product like a chip seal down, and it gives you durability and drivability for a couple of years, but now you've got to stay focused on that. And that's really what the report said, was it really gets down to what do you want to get out of there. Unfortunately, many of our roads are too narrow, and they'll have to park for green. That's where we're the biggest challenge.
Well, that's why chips...
And to get past that...
Chips heal ruins that anyway, but when it goes in plenty of ditches out.
So, you know, and when you start getting, when you start trying to do something in that, as we all know, you know, now you've got to get into right-of-way acquisition, utility relocations, and, you know, $125,000, what do you pay for the engineering costs, primarily? We take all those things up back, so the pacer rating, kind of what our available funding is, and kind of this priority and path of trying to focus on residential areas. This is the first one that I would say is not your traditional neighborhood, but I was surprised, too, we drove up there. I didn't realize there were so many houses up there.
I didn't know that was either.
And how bad that, how bad it really had gotten up there.
I'm not sure you can find a road that's in more need, and so we tried, you know, if we patch it, try to do fixes to it. We can save $50,000.
We're going to waste money, we've done that already.
Yeah, and I agree with Councilman Loa. I'm not against fixing the people's road, you know what, they pay taxes just like the person down town pays taxes, and they want a good road to drive part two. I'm not saying that, I just was asking, how was it?
Yeah, it was based upon condition.
Chosen, and also, I can't hardly believe that south of Swarts on 98th Street shows whatever color that could be, and that it's not red with maroon and black highlights, because it's...
Well, this is...
98th Street is terrible.
And we, I'm going to update it myself, I did this for 15 years at Shining myself, and I used to place it like this, so I'm going to do the pavement evaluation, so we'll have updated information hopefully in January or February, so you can actually see in real time what the condition of our roads are, and hopefully get a formulated plan going forward on priorities.
And generally, the pacer rating overall, to some respects, is primarily looking at the road's surface condition? So is it cracked and failing and things like that? But some of the other things, right, is the width of the pavement, can I see over the hills? You know, I may have small areas within, so they'll say, we're going to take a quarter-mile section, oh, it's got, you know, three potholes in a quarter-mile section, it may still rate it there at five or six or seven, versus it's got 20 potholes in that same area, or you can see there's significant base failure. I'm sure any of those areas already had a small sectional base failure, and that's where the full-depth patching comes in to do it. Even if you're going to go redo the road, you'd have to do those kind of repairs.
What I have seen, noticed in the last few years, is 98th Street from State Avenue all the way down, because it is one of the only through streets that we have from, it may be the only street that goes from our most southern border to our northern border, and it has increased drastically in traffic. And in not only just vehicle, but truck traffic. I don't know how many people come down in 18-wheelers that are trying to get to the industrial area.
Yeah, on the southern part of the...
But they're turning in off of State Avenue and coming south.
We did do a traffic, you know, the UG did a traffic camp for us, at least in that period of time, it was just a few, I mean, just a couple of heavy trucks, and I'm saying, it's the only place we did it here in this 24-hour period, and the next 24-hour period could be something different, but we did look at that previously. Anyways.
Any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the city manager entering the contract with Little Joe's Asphalt for the 2018 street maintenance project, as presented to us for
It has been moved in second to approve, authorize the city manager to enter contract with Little Joe's Asphalt for the 2018 street maintenance project in amount of $123-510 with the clerk please call roll.
Loa?
Yes.
Schreiber?
Yes.
Mike, you're up.
I don't know that I have much to add tonight. I will be, for reference, at the IC meetings, the city manager's conference, oh, the 22nd or 26th, which travels fine. So I will not be at your next meeting, but I'll be assistant here, who apparently is the city manager, if you talk to him.
Well, we've heard that coming.
Yes. So when he's at the chamber, apparently that's the title, I'm not so wrong in that, but he will, I'm sure, lead us in that. I don't expect there to be many things significant, there may be one item related to the Little South project on bonding, the bonds, and there are broad bases that everyone has had to handle that, but it's somewhat of an administrative function versus the actual sales of bonds and contractual prices. Oh, yes, we do have a special meeting that we set up that...
Dave Bonner and the UG.
...and the UG at the...
George Mulford?
Yes, yeah, George Mulford, right. And we'll get more information out on that. I think, Mayor, that Mayor of City, Andrew Bonner, we're going to try to meet together, maybe Mayor tomorrow, just kind of go through broad agenda. And the purpose of this is to give, to give our government an opportunity to come before our bodies, present the county side of the budget numbers, county side, what do we get from services, what are those taxes paying for, et cetera, and to give the council an opportunity to ask about different programs or items that you may have to present. So, okay, originally, we're going to go to Bonner Springs and then come here, and I reached out to Bonner and said, well, why don't we do this in one review, and we'll just do it on our off nights, and we have some...
And I do have just one more quick plug for Autumn Fest, which is September 21st, 22nd. A new, it's not really part of Autumn Fest, but it's going on the 21st, we're going to be having a revenue cutting ceremony for the new section of trail at 4 o'clock on the 21st, so we'll send you all some information about that, hope to get some close to the UG and Mark out there as well. Later that evening, at this energy, we'll be sponsoring our disc-off open at the City Park beginning at 6:00, and Craft Air is also going on that night, beginning at 4:00. Saturday will kick off with the Juanes Club marriage prayer breakfast at 7:30, that'll run till probably around 9:00, 9:30, at which point Craft Air will be open. The ride, the bounce houses should be all fired up by 11:00. The Edwardville, which require, will hit the performance at 11:00 on the stage. Face painters and balloon artists throughout the day, we'll have performances on the stage throughout the day, and our Saturday night concert will start at 5:30, and it's headlined by a man named Ken Cox, who's an upcomer in Nashville, so he'll start playing at 8:30. Couple of you already reached out to me for volunteership, so I'll be sending more information about that this week, and we are looking forward to it.
Good, thank you, Zach. Welcome, Mayor. Chief, all is well, thank you. Chief, clear?
We have extended a conditional offer to one of our part-time firefighter car mechanics to fill one of our two vacancies that we haven't anticipated, we did lose our second. Our firefighter mechanic did go to KCK effective the 25th of this month, so we did conditionally pass, didn't pass the physical and a few other items. We'll be hearing from him from a part-time position at Full House Lot, we did interview several more candidates last week, so we may have some more new faces that everybody will be seeing for Fall Festival, Dark Retriect Time, and a few other items with that. Don't forget, the next council meeting will be in front of you, asking to spend about $1.1 million. We'll be part of that key line of fire act grants, will be the SEBA purchase, the process will go for the bill beginning on Thursday, back in front of you, also on the 24th for the purpose of that. We will have the breakdown for not only our city's dentistry pension chair, but also what the total prices for the other nine agencies as well, so that should be the only action we have anticipated for that. The other grant process we will be dealing on the fire act grant will be in front of you guys in October. For the turnout here, that will be quite small, unfortunately, they spent all their money in one setting time, so they did limit the some caps on that. So we are looking at a very busy and packed December, and some of you are aware, we did purchase, go through the process to start to purchase the truck, and it's about a 90-day window, time to purchase delivery, as well as the air packs will be here about 90 days, so in December, all that will start rolling through over here in the fire station. So Santa Claus is coming quite early to Edwardville on top of the program to crew, or Santa Claus, if I have to fight with it and contend with it. So come December, I will probably not have any air, lose about 35 pounds, like I've aged 30 years, but other than that, it's all the air going right through.
You do not chief, you're not chief, but you did meet with the new incoming chief, the Casey King today?
Yes, sir. So we've kind of extended that old branch, asked me in six months, I'll let you know exactly.
Thank you, Chief. Danny, do you got anything else?
Yes, sir.
Lori, you next?
Yeah.
Carolyn, we'll start with you.
I was just kind of following the thread with the hotel promotion on Facebook, and a couple of people had mentioned upkeep at the park. I know we've done things recently with the mulch and that sort, but I was just wondering, like, I'm mowing and maintenance, do we have a regular schedule, I assume?
We do, it's complicated, the last couple weeks, we've just been keeping up with the rain, but typically, we try to handle that with just the part-time park staff, but throughout December, as we lead up into the Autumn Fest, a couple of those crews are going to have that as well. We do have a part-time person on the crew now, who's doing pretty much all the edging and the detail, so we're keeping up.
Some of those comments are, I have to say, were fair, I think. If we're not at the stadium, I would say that's all the time, but it definitely needed some extra attention. We had actually gone down there a few days before we had them, I didn't do it, it was like, you know...
Pointed out there.
They were fair compliments in that sense.
Do we generally do our maintenance there, mowing on a designated basis, or is it scheduled?
It's usually pretty scheduled, yeah. I mean, it's just a, we're partially working around here next week, part-time crew, especially direct summer, and the other part is fall, and it's pretty good. There's a lot of site, too, recreation activities going on there as well, so soccer and fall halls.
One other thing I have, I'm not sure how feasible this is, is we've talked a lot recently about our commercial income from our tax database and things like that, and we've seen a couple of businesses close unfortunately here at Edwardville, but I thought we'd be really... really maybe we might be able to do some, you know, promotion, hey, we just want to promote this local business and do like a spotlight, maybe give us an opportunity to write a little blurb and we can maybe put it in a hot shot or Facebook post or something like that, just to support our local businesses here in Edwardville.
That's a good idea. We've done it periodically, not regularly, we probably should, but that is probably an idea. Probably that'll be the work with Chambers more.
The Chambers, I think, I had one of the things, they're kind of restarting their chamber coffees and some of those things to try to improve that connection and activity and, you know, the rigging cuttings and some of those things that, you know, they're easy to fall off because they, you know, it is fall off, and so Jim is doing like a really good job of trying to reconnect that. But that, that is a gap that's hard between a wind-down EDC that's focused on, you know, large projects and then how do we stay connected with a small business? Definitely is a, you know, needs the time put into it, so good idea.
Here. I'm confused on this abandoning Pacific Street. Why would something that we've been renting and leasing, why would we have to spend money to abandon it? Am I thinking the right, right direction or wrong direction? If there's going to be a silent crossing put in there that's falling, why, why wouldn't that take care of that part? Why do we need to worry about the rest of it? They mow, you know, all the way across the United States on their rightways and not that. Can you simplify this?
Sure. So the road is, so the, considered a road, number one, it's, it's a, it's considered either an alley or driveway. So that is on their property, and way back, like into the fifties, there was a lease. Back in those days, the lease was like three hundred dollars for twenty years. And then they came to us and said it's forty-five hundred a year with a three percent every year increase. So number one, that was kind of like, well, that's a, you know, now you're changing the cost a lot, but relative to the quiet zone, you cannot have any access point within a hundred feet of the railroad line. And so those roads, north and south, would all be within that hundred feet, and therefore they have to be closed and removed. We were looking at to say, can we do, would it be easier to do it now while we already have a contract with a painting company and with the UG? The UG's the one paying for the quiet zone. So the question to them, and it's still outstanding, would they pay for it now versus what do you pay for it later? But at some point, it comes out.
What does removal mean? I mean, it seems to me like they would rather want to have that there where they could come along and spray the weeds rather than have to kind of cut trees down.
Wouldn't you terminate the lease? Any improvements? Because nobody can tell me when that was done. Any improvements after we remove it? At the, whoever leased the property, which is us, who passed the move.
Here's my sarcastic remark. What improvement has that made down there?
I would be fine with leaving it.
And it's rotten asphalt on the south, so how much money are we talking about having to remove that?
It was about twenty, twenty-two thousand.
To do what?
Oh, man, and literally.
Rained up and all that.
I don't think we planned the whole office.
Yeah, for removing the asphalt.
Office removed.
Yeah, we moved it to disposal.
We moved disposal, brated, leave it in a.
A moldy condition.
And block it also, and be exited.
I'd say maybe like some signs that do just, because I'd rather have that asphalt there if I was the railroad, where you could just spray the weed down it.
I wonder if you'd ask her about that.
You're apparently, you're not doing, maybe we're dealing with.
They've been abundantly clear that the improvement, because I was like, what's the, I mean, I kind of fought with them on it, and they just kept coming back and back and back. I mean, at the moment, we have the lease extended for a one-year period. We've got to reduce the price per year. Why don't we wait to see what happens with the quiet zone? I mean, it's funded, the quiet zone is funded, in terms of speaking, but it was looking at to say, can we do it now versus later? And if it can be reimbursed or the UG, I said UG, or the county project can fund that cost, then it makes sense to do it now.
Then there's no second, so you just see if they can't throw that in along with the, I'm calling that an abandonment, but you're calling it a tear up, pay to tear it up instead of just walking away.
We have to remove.
Sounds to me like the lease contract says you got to remove it.
Yes.
You have to return it to the condition it was when it was.
Okay, there's, that's my question. I'm sent over by my way right now. So who's to say what the condition was in nineteen fifty when we took it? I mean, who is that? Was there asphalt there in nineteen fifty? And did we, and did we do an improvement since then?
Yeah.
I mean, and I think it's incumbent upon them to say that you guys changed it, not us, to prove that we did. I say, you know what? Hey, we never, tell us, show us where we improved it, and we will, we will gladly remove it. But until you can do that, here it is.
There, I, I want.
You want to remove, remove it.
Yeah, I'll just say this, and then it's probably something, you know, maybe we need to, to, you know, have some, but I, the old, the old lease said that we leased the property. Now, I don't know what was there, to use it for the purposes being used for that alley way I did just earlier, but it doesn't say what the condition was prior or after. It says that's why we leased it, and their position is, well, you leased it and obviously you improved it with asphalt.
Well, it sounds like something that if we can't get it worked out with the railroad, then we probably need to tag it onto the UG.
Right.
And on the seventeenth or whatever the date is of that meeting, you know, if we have to, if that's something that comes up. UG, if you're wanting the quiet zone, you know, this is a cost that goes along with the quiet zone. And it's not coming out of taxpayers' dollars, it's coming out of you guys. So that's my.
So it is, it is part of the project, the, the quiet zone project. It's already considered in the plans. We were just, if we were already going out to bid and the price is negligible and, you know, get it done and be done with it and then, you know, get reimbursed or whatever, fine. Probably at this point, we're just going to wait and make it part of the project. We'll probably, we now, I was trying to get that done before we had the interim to a lease. We kind of got to the point where we finally had to sign off on the lease, and so we have it leased for a year or so. We, we have a twelve-month period now where we have some comp.
How much is a lease now?
It's, for this year, it's fifteen hundred dollars.
And what was it last year?
Well, it was three hundred dollars for twelve years.
So they went up that much?
Yeah. They went at forty-five, they say the market value's forty-five hundred dollars.
Tell them we use a lease mode to tear it out, and then they can have that.
That, that's where, I mean, if you're spending forty-five hundred dollars a year, it's ten thousand or fifteen thousand to take it out. Right. I mean, two years down through, you know, it has a lot of comp paid. Obviously, we have houses up there, but all of them have access on the, it's the seventh streets. That, and it's going to go, if there's quiet zone, it's gone, but no one can answer that.
I hated to bring that up, but I can't. You know, when you say quiet crossings and abandoning railroad property that you've been leasing, it just didn't sound right to me, but anyway. The other question was, did you consider putting striping on that parking lot or community center?
Yes.
Like before?
We have that in, striking.
With it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just wait to get it on a second.
Thank you.
Yeah, probably done, yeah.
Call for me? Thanks.
Um, sorry, remind me again the date of the special meeting. Is it next Monday?
Next Monday night.
Seven?
I don't get six-thirty. I need that one checked. We'll send something out.
Go send that to us. And Zach, if you could send us kind of a, could you send us kind of an itinerary of the, the twenty-second?
Yep. There's going to be a, a hot shot, we'll come out this week, whatever they want. But I'll send the council a separate email.
And where?
Where?
Help us.
Yep. I will.
First, I want, I want to address Mr. Bodie.
Bodie.
Bodie. I did not receive an email. Now, I will tell you, I don't know when, when you sent that out, if it was in the last couple, two or three weeks or not. I had, definitely had a phone issue that I went through, so if I was one, maybe that it didn't respond, that said it was undeliverable, I don't know if it was me or not, but if you'd like to send me that email again, I'm up and running and good. And I will tell you that if our council meetings are on YouTube, and if you want, three meetings ago, I believe, if you would go back and look at that meeting, you will see where I voiced my opinion on the mill levy and pricing our residents out of being able to live in our city any further. So if you check that out. But I am, I am also very much concerned about taxpayer dollars increases, mill levies, and, and how we can close that gap, but I'll talk to you about that a little bit more later. Zach, would you put our calendar back?
Yes.
And, and right there, back where it was at? That thing, I looked at Mark or Councilman Driver, and I'm like, we need a calendar back, because we look it up there at dates, and it's, or it can go here. You know what? I'm getting old, my eyes, they can go right here. If you don't want, we'll drill a new hole. I'm good with that. I was glad to hear, Tammy, you probably knew that it was coming when you were talking about the Hundredth Street and when you said that you, there were some things on 98th Street you were going to address if there's money extra, because that's where I was going for sure after that. And because there are some places south of Riverview that it's.
In the river, you're pushing out.
It's, yeah, it's, well, I don't know what you all call it, the technical term, that it's pushing out or what have you, and you can see where bottom, the bottoms of cars have made contact with the pavement because of the dents that are in there. So I'm glad to hear that. I'm not asking for a whole new road by anyone, it's just one that you can't lose a small child in, in wanting some holes at all. Other than that? Lisa?
Thank you all. I have nothing more to add.
You're all right, John.